Call to order, the Planning Commission meeting on Wednesday, September 6, 2017. And with that, we'll all rise for the allegiance. Repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With the City Planner, please call the roll.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Ruland.
Here.
Commissioner Blackwell.
Here.
Commissioner Tally.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Crandall.
Here.
Commissioner Boo.
Yeah.
And Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we have no special orders of business tonight. We do have the minutes from the special study session meeting of August 16th. Is there any changes or is there a motion to approve?
I have a change to change my name to Commissioner Zane to Commissioner Wu.
How dare us do that?
Is this a study session?
This is a study session.
It's on both. Special meeting or study session?
Uh huh.
No, not on the study session, I'm sorry. It's on the planning commission.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the special study session of City and Committee Planning Commission, August 16, 2017. Have a motion. A second by Commissioner Tally, motion by Commissioner Crandall, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes 7-0. Okay, now to the big event of the evening, of course.
The regular minutes.
The regular minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission of September, August 16th. Are there any corrections?
There are.
Commissioner Smith.
Commissioner Smith, happy birthday to me. Okay, I might need some feedback from my fellow commissioners on this, but page four, at the bottom of the page where it says amended as follows, approved with the caveat that the findings made in the resolution do not allow the 300-foot separation requirement for the same shelter operator to be removed. Now, I remember that we removed the 300-foot. We wanted a 300-foot separation, we didn't want it, but I don't remember this being specific only to the same shelter operator. I thought it was for anybody that came in, that there had to be at least 300 feet between these facilities.
No, there was, the exception was for the same shelter operator, they wouldn't have to be 300 feet apart.
So the idea was to remove the exception. The idea was.
But no.
The idea was to remove the exception, reinstating the 300-foot barrier for all.
For all?
For all, right. So the ordinance, the proposed finding specifically dealt with the caveat of the 300-foot separation being removed if and only if it was the same shelter operator. So this is, I mean, it's the double negative that's in there.
Yeah, I know, it's strange.
I don't think that's proper language, but it, I think this accurately, I mean.
I'll stand down if that's the case. I didn't remember it that way, but.
It is accurate because the 300 feet separation is always there for different operators. And it never changed.
And so we removed.
Oh, that was only a requirement for the same?
Yes.
Oh, I thought that was in general. So a different operator can't be within 300 feet?
Correct.
Okay, I feel better now.
Oh, the more you iterate it, when you think about it, the worse it gets.
There it is.
Let's see.
Is there any other?
Yeah.
Another discussion? Okay.
No, my comment about my name is on page four with all capital, paragraph, third line, Commissioner Wu, then on page five, the first line, and then on page seven, the all capital, paragraph, third line.
So you're all over the map with that, aren't you?
It's his name, you know, come on.
It's your name.
You have two last names.
You know, it's the first thing, the first thing you do in boot camp is take your name away from you, and then they give it back to you 13 weeks later. Okay, any more discussion on the minutes? Let me, I went back and reviewed the tape about three times. And so Ms. Tally, on the first bullet on page three, you had a very long speech between 23 minutes in and 27 minutes in on the tape, and I didn't quite get where you said what's in the first paragraph. Is that what you meant to say in the paragraph on the tape? Because the video does not support your statement there in that time. Established from Christina Tally, Deputy City Attorney, that although the city is not prohibited from requiring a 300-foot buffer between two emergency shelters from the same provider, eliminating the 300-foot buffer requirement for shelter operated by the same provider was agreed to by staff in response to concerns raised by stakeholders, certification of draft housing element by the Department of Housing and Community Development is conditioned on the city adopting this exception. Can you refresh me where, in fact, during the two hours and 47 minutes of our meeting you said that, because I couldn't find it.
Well, having not seen the tape, I can't quite too particular place in the meeting, but I do have a recollection of explaining that the. Oh, thank you, I apologize for that. I do have recollection of explaining that the exception was the result of a staff recommendation after a meeting with stakeholders, and one of the stakeholders in the meeting suggested that by removing this 300-foot buffer, it might make it easier for a shelter to be established in that area. So I recall making that statement, and I believe I also indicated that the letter that we got from HCD, July 24th letter, was a conditional approval, and that in that letter, one of the conditions was that the city implement the programs in the revised housing element, and one such program was to amend the ordinance to make this exception to the 300-foot buffer rule. That's my recollection, I can't tell you whether or not I used this exact language.
I could never find anywhere in this HCD letter where they say, state that. How do we read between the lines for me?
So maybe to kind of help provide information on that is, in the previous letters that we got from HCD in regards to the area, the one thing that they kept coming back to was that we needed to show some type of feasibility and certainty that this could get done. Staff had proposed different ways of doing that, and the way that they accepted was the 300-foot elimination for shared providers. And so that's how that got in there. Every other rendition that we had submitted and proposed, we got the same comment back from them until we did that one. So basically, what they've said is, as proposed within this, they were able to remove that comment, which is why they conditioned it to be adopted.
So I'm supposed to read between the lines, is that's what it says?
Yes, yes.
Because at minute 43 on the tape, Mr. Tally very rightly says, they're an administrative function of government and they're exceeding their own ordinance that allows us 300 feet. In other words, that was on the tape.
I'll let Christina speak to that, but yes, the law does say you can have a 300-foot separation, but what it also says is that those shelters have to prove to be feasible in some way. And the concern from HCD was within that geographic area by having that 300-foot buffer, that might have been an impediment to doing those shelters. And so as opposed to removing it altogether, they agreed on the 300-foot.
So they imposed on us the removal of this, you know, greater restriction than their own published law.
Well, what happened was, the city, in an effort to address the comment about the questions concerning feasibility of identifying only the business park, agreed that it would, that staff would recommend that this 300-foot buffer exception not apply to shelters of the same operator. That was a staff recommendation, and so what HCD said in response to that, and that recommendation was put into one of the programs, I think 13, but.
Either 13 or 14 is the only two you've got a choice.
Right, it's either 13 or 14.
Pick one.
Okay, and so in response to our putting it into the program, what HCD did is, they accepted that program to address their concern about feasibility, and they removed that feasibility comment. And so when we talk about them requiring it, they're not mandating that we do that, but they accepted our offer as a way to address their concern about feasibility.
So I think the concern that I have when I read that bullet is that it appears to be an if and only if statement, which is, it's conditioned upon us adopting that exception, whereas we weren't sure, there is no guarantee that they were going to certify our housing element. It was a potential certification, and the way that this.
It's still a potential.
It's still a potential, and the way that this is drafted is that certification is guaranteed, and it's conditioned upon this, because I think I asked the question.
You did.
Could the, how HCD still approve our plan if we removed that same operator constraint? I think you said, yes, they could, we don't know if they will, but yes, they could, and we may have to start all over again, but yes, they could. And this, this does, this makes it appear like that is our only choice.
Well. I'm sorry, can I, forgive me for interrupting. The question here, I don't think at this point is, is was it a conditional approval, were they right to add conditions to it or anything like that? The question here is, is this bullet point reflect what went on in the meeting? And right or wrong? So it does reflect my understanding of what's in the meeting, and whether HCD was right or wrong to do that, that is beyond the scope of what we're talking about, I think.
Okay, enough. Any other debate? We have a motion to approve, amend, a second, what do we want to do?
I'll move, we approve the minutes.
Have a motion by.
Excuse me, with the changes to Commissioner Wu's name.
Okay, a motion by Ruland, a second by Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Passes 6-0-1. Okay. With that, oral written communication, many members of the audience may have a progressive commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city and are not otherwise on the agenda. If you wish to speak, please step forward to the microphone, state your name, city resident, and make your presentation. Please limit your presentation to three minutes. Seeing no one in the audience and no cards, we will go, move on to item seven, consent calendar, which there is nothing on our agenda tonight. We'll go into the public hearings, item 8A, which the public hearing process includes a staff presentation.
It doesn't.
And for 10 minutes, and public testimony.
Right.
To facilitate the meeting, all attendees, the public is asked to limit their individual presentation to three minutes following the closure of the public hearing, and the Planning Commission will respond to questions raised during the hearing and discuss the issues and act upon the matter by motion. Item 8A, General Plan Amendment 17-261, the 2013-2021 Housing Element Midterm Update. Ms. Gregg.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners, so if you feel like we just talked about this, we did, but here we are again, talking about the update to the midterm element. So just to kind of give some information as to why are we doing this again already? It's because that the housing element that was just adopted by the city council last night covers a timeframe from 2013 to 2021, and had the element been adopted on time in the 2013 time period, this would be a halfway point. So what the law does is it assumes that everyone adopts on time, it doesn't take into account those that take a little bit longer to work through the process. So there's a statutory date that we have to approve a midterm update on, or by, and that's October 15th of 2017. So this is our effort to address that. And in the letter that we received from HCD on July 24th, they clarify that, yes, in fact, even though we just issued this approval on July 24th, we still are going to require you to submit a midterm update on, by that date, according to the law. What they were able to do, though, was to tell us that they will limit their review to track changes. This was a verbal agreement in light of the fact that not a whole lot was going to be able to be changed within such a small time period. So we're very happy to hear that that's how we're going to be reviewing this.
This was a verbal agreement?
Yes, this was verbal, yes, very clear on that. But housing, a midterm update still requires public participation, making sure that we notify the public and get information. So what staff did is, one, we conducted a survey, we publicized that on social media, so we used our Facebook blast, I think there was one other blast in there too, whether it was Instagram or Twitter, I'm not quite sure, but that did go out. We received some comments in regard to that. Then you gentlemen were a part of the study session slash public workshop that was held on August 16th, and that was followed up by a second public workshop at the community center on August 17th. And basically, the midterm, the purpose of the midterm is to review the housing element and look at it from a halfway point to see what have you accomplished, and what do you still need to accomplish, and are you on track of doing that within the specified timeframe of the planning fifth element period, which ends in 2021. So we had to look at, are these things feasible, how are we going to do them, and give, and some of them have revised timeframes on them. So some of the updates include demographic and current market condition updates. So we were writing the previous housing element for basically 2014 to 2017, so we had to go back and update the median income information with 2017 numbers, as well as the housing inventory and market conditions for 2017. We were also able to update our RENA numbers and identify the additional units that were able to be constructed, meeting those RENA requirements. We noted the approved emergency shelter modifications that were approved by the city council last night, and then we also updated the site inventory list. And the city, as part of one of the programs, was also charged with creating a list of affordable housing developers. We did that, and we also sent them the updated list to those affordable housing developers. And what's really nice is that we've got a lot of feedback or response back from them, so we will be meeting with them to kind of go over opportunities in the city. We've also actually had contact with Mary Erickson Housing, who's looking to do another development in conjunction with the county, so lots of good things coming out of, so we're very excited about that. So after the review tonight, the goal is for you to be able to recommend approval of the document and direct staff to submit to HCD. The next steps from that is, we would submit directly to HCD for their review, and they typically have a 60-day review period, but in light of the deadline being October 15th, we have asked for an expedited review of 20 days. Although they haven't committed to this and guaranteed this, what they have said is that they will try their hardest to meet this, and we've kind of kept them up to date and sent them the documents as they became available in order for them to review them as well, within that timeframe. So after their review period, the next milestone will be for the city council to approve them. Tentatively, there's a special city council hearing date for October 10th, to basically give HCD as much time as possible to review it, and allow staff to write a staff report and get that in the hands of the city council. So those are the next step for this update. So with that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission direct staff to submit the document to HCD for their review, and recommend that the city council approve the midterm update for the 2017-2021 time period.
So this goes direct to HCD after tonight?
It does.
And so if they don't approve it, then we come back and we start working over through again, because there's no guarantee whatever, you never know until you know.
Exactly, so they have their opportunity to provide comments, the public has their opportunity to provide comments on the document. The goal is hopefully that they can certify the update as well, and if they, if need be, conditionally, if they have comments on anything in the document, yeah.
Yeah, we put the 300-foot rule right back in if they don't approve it. I'm just teasing you.
Amber, is there any chance that we revise this before we submit it?
Oh, yes, uh huh, yeah, yeah.
But you're counting minutes, I think it is.
What we'll do is, whatever your recommendations are, we can incorporate and send them along, and then we're hoping to have it to them by the end of this week, though.
Okay.
So Veronica Tam will be turning those around as quick as possible.
Burning the midnight oil.
So Exhibit A is what we're going to be submitting, is that correct?
Yes, Exhibit A is.
And. It's a complete manual.
It's a complete manual, and does it reflect what the city council?
It does.
How can it reflect? Am I reading this wrong, then? On HE 41, 42, 43, when it talks about emergency shelters, I don't see the changes in there.
It's not in that body, it's in the program itself.
The program 13.
Should it not be in the body?
We can add it to the body if we.
Well, there's things that should be revised, like location of the emergency shelter overlay. It says on October 18th, 2016, we adopted the overlay, and that's the one it shows, but did we not do that again last night?
Yes, we did, so we can add that that change.
So I think we need to amend that to be consistent with what transpired last night, and what they're expecting to see, because I think they'd stumble on this, saying we aren't consistent throughout the document.
Okay, we'll make sure that that's in there.
And that also would be the development standards on HE 47.
HE 47. Yes, you're right.
I have a parking card.
On HE 49, the ESO amendment, the first paragraph there, remove the 300-foot separation, isn't this not correct now?
Yeah, this is correct.
Does remove the separation requirement?
It said reviewed.
If the same shelter operator proposes, so you're removing it.
That's the proper wording, for one operator.
This statement says that on August 16th, the Planning Commission reviewed the following bullet points, so it's just saying what we reviewed, and we did review that.
Mm-hmm.
But if I'm not mistaken, didn't the council just approve this as well, so? But if I'm not mistaken, didn't the council just approve this as well, so?
Yes.
Yeah, so. But this is just a statement of what we reviewed. They're telling them this is what the planning commission looked at.
So actually, if we want, you could actually put in the city council adopted it.
Yes, yes.
Rather than a review thing.
So we'll make sure that that's reflected throughout before submitting.
And so are we being asked to approve this document and then have that document, our approval, is what is submitted to the HCD?
No. So what was approved, two separate documents, let's keep that in mind.
Okay.
Last night, whatever the city council approved, which included these, that actually got submitted to HCD today.
Okay.
So that 2013-2021 housing element is submitted.
It's the first term.
This is a mid-year update. And again, remember that the mid-year update focuses on your progress for what you've completed and tasks you've accomplished that you've identified in the full document.
Which since we've been in litigation in court, we haven't really discussed a lot.
Exactly, that, there's the problem.
So you have a very steep curve for the young lady in the front row here to work on.
So we will, but we are, this midterm update, whatever we approve tonight is what is submitted for review by HCD before it goes to council for their comments, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so the document that we approve out of here is what goes to them initially before council gets their bite at the apple.
Exactly. And keep in mind that, as Commissioner Crandall's pointed out, everything that the city council has already adopted will be reflected in the document, and those modifications, including any recommendation that you have, will be incorporated before we send that to HCD.
Let me, I want to make sure I understand. So this document, we'll do whatever we do to this document, and then tomorrow you're going to send this to HCD?
Mm-hmm. Well, by the end of the week is our goal, to send it to HCD.
For their comment?
Uh-huh. They have to review also, they get an opportunity to review.
Before it goes to city council?
Exactly.
Okay, got it.
And it will not come back here?
It will not come back to planning commission. There's no way.
City council has the last bite of the apple, based on HCD approval, which probably will be a pass-through.
And so the, I noticed in here that the dates on this are as of September 2017 for, like, homeless population estimation.
Mm-hmm.
We just had a homeless person that was arrested for attempted murder. Does that lower our number by one?
No. I'm sorry.
Okay, I was hoping...
Yeah.
It's the lawyer, Eddie.
Yeah, I know, but I love it.
Can I still have a question on HE forty-nine? Would you just read that, remove the three-hundred, read it out loud?
Okay, I'm going to read the whole sentence, the thing, so we don't take it out of context. "On August sixteenth, 2017, the planning commission reviewed the following proposed changes. Remove the three-hundred-foot separation requirement between two emergency shelters if the same shelter operator proposes to open a second shelter within proximity of its first shelter," meaning within three hundred feet of the first shelter.
I thought we weren't going to allow the same shelter operator to work another deal within three hundred feet.
That was the planning commission's recommendation, you're absolutely right, that they had said no. But city council voted to keep this in. So they did not support planning commission's recommendation.
All right, well, that was inconsistent with what I thought we did, so I understand that now.
Okay, good, thank you.
They threw us, they threw us under the bus, then, right?
No, they didn't.
They did their job.
They did their job. They took, they, they had an extensive closed session last night and ran over them in the regular council meetings, twenty or thirty minutes late starting.
Thanks for starting me, because I didn't, I thought this was a mistake.
They were back there discussing issues.
So I have just a question on, so we do these mid-year updates. Can the planning commission on our own volition propose changes to zoning sites three years from now?
The city council directs staff. So you can request or make a recommendation to the city council for an amendment to a general plan or zoning ordinance, and we would present that to the city council, and then they would direct staff to either do it or not do it.
But we could do that on our, I mean, we could initiate that process as a body here?
Yes.
Instead of having to have staff come to us with that. So two years down the road, if we feel that...
Some people walked into council one night with their telescopes and got a dark skies ordinance thing all activated.
Well, we're a advisor to the city council, so we can just call the city council, maybe ask them to put something on the agenda, so.
Okay, we can probably debate this forever, it's pretty much what is what is. To fait accompli, to go forward on this, is about as, you can probably go through this thing, and I don't know if you can go page by page with Ms. Tam in the next day or so to make sure it all synchronized based on latest iterations and the twenty-day review from HCD. I guarantee you, if they don't approve it, I will personally reconvene to the planning commission and will readdress this three-hundred-foot rule. So send them a threat the other way, or a nice subtle hint that we can, whatever. Anyway, Commissioner Wu, you had your line.
Yeah, I quickly went through the documents, and I have a few recommendations, and I hope that we have time to maybe address some of those before we submit it to the...
Go through it right now.
Excuse me, do we have to do public comment first?
Bart already touched on...
Well, I don't know, oh, you want to go to public? Yeah, let's do that.
Just to move through that.
We're done with questions of staff.
Follow order?
We'll close, as that, open the public comment. Seeing no one, we'll close the public comment and enter into discussion and corrections. Mr. Wu.
First is on HE two, about housing needs survey. And I want to do a quick survey here. How many, how many of you guys use Facebooks? How many of you use Twitter?
I use Facebook.
Okay. The sample seemed to be pretty low. There's only nine respondents. Do we do traditional way, like put it on newspaper or some post, direct mail type of thing?
Well, I would say unfortunately, less people tend to read the newspaper anymore these days. So given the limited timeframe that we had, we used what resources we had available to us to get as many comments as possible. But you're absolutely, you're right, we had a lot more comments previously when we did the housing element. I think we had about a hundred and fifty responses to surveys, but that's because we had more time to generate public participation and get the word out. And unfortunately, we just did not have that luxury this time. We made sure we reached out directly to social service providers, any social service agencies that the city supports or that we knew of, in order to get that direct information.
Okay.
But yeah.
On HE four, needs assessment, for lots of those, like age composition, race and ethnicity, employment and trend, et cetera, it looks like we can use some infographics to convey the information in a better way. Right now, they're all text and charts and tables.
I think that's a great comment for the next housing element. What we really want to be careful of is how much we change. Remember that the focus of the update is to just go over how you've met your programs and your progress on them. It's not to do a comprehensive update of the housing element. So I think that's a good comment on, a better way to show that for the next one.
I think HCD expects a standard format and maybe keep it simple.
Exactly. The more we change, the more they have to review.
All right. On HE thirty-one, on table thirty-five, this past July, two-one-one released the final report of the PIT, point in time count. Orange County has, for 2017, Orange County has twenty-five-hundred-eighty-four homeless people, with sheltered number being twenty-two oh eight, and I'm sorry, unsheltered twenty-five eighty-four, sheltered twenty-two oh eight, and a total of forty-seven ninety-two. Can we, since those informations are available now, can we add it to the table?
We did contact Orange County, who did conduct the point in time, and asked if the specific numbers for each city are complete, and they're not complete yet. They said that as soon as they are, they will release that information, and then we could update our homeless count. And actually, as part of our housing programs, we are required to adopt a new housing estimate for the city.
The city-specific data is not available.
The city-specific is not available.
But this table is about the countrywide, countywide, and those data are available now.
Um, yeah, we can look at adding that.
While we're on that page, maybe, I think where you've got sheriff misspelled several times on there.
Oh.
And, I'm sorry, we threw?
Yeah.
Yeah, if I can just interject, that seventy-bed count number, and we originally did SB two all those years ago, the, an important number was this number, but it wasn't the only piece of data, because the best we could do is an estimate. We could, we took, you know, could put our best intelligence on it, but no one thought that there was exactly seventy homeless people here, sometimes more, sometimes less. So I think this other paragraph on the top of HE thirty-two says that in, that the county has indicated that they think the number's probably about the same for San Clemente. When we originally did it, we also checked with the sheriff, and I think we had one other...
FAM, FAM, and a couple other providers that correlated that number. So we kind of triangulated it.
The county numbers changed, went up a little bit for unsheltered, and they're telling us they don't think it probably increased in San Clemente, at least as far as they can tell. So given that, I think it's a pretty, as, again, we're just, we're making the best estimate we can, it's probably a good, good estimate that we're at about the same number as a couple years ago.
If you go back to the program areas, I forget which one, fourteen, fifteen, we're on the hook, I think, Amber, like this December, to update the number anyway, I think it is.
Yes, we commit to updating a new number once we have the information.
Information.
When do we expect the city-level specific number to be available?
They have said within the next couple of weeks, but they've been saying that for several months now. So they're typically released in July. We checked last week, they said they still were not available. They said in the following week. As soon as we get them, though, this...
Okay.
We need to go...
Because the number I just gave you, for the countrywide number, is consistent with the seven-point-six percent increase throughout the county. But we're saying it doesn't mean that the city's homeless number will be increased, because we're waiting, we're still waiting for the specific number. Okay.
Yeah, I don't think this is in the critical path.
And then the next one is on HE forty-one, and a few other pages. Those now, those questions about accessory or second dwelling unit. First question is, the last time you said, it's possible that those affordable, those accessory dwelling units can be qualified to be counted as affordable housing units. Do you have a definitive answer on that?
They can be counted as affordable units.
Do you have a number of the city, how many, how many permits were issued for accessory dwelling units?
No, the city has not been tracking that information. We're going to have to do some research and see if we have specific second dwelling unit information that would qualify for accessory dwelling units, as well as potentially other communities call them casitas. So that's going to be some due diligence that the staff's going to have to do.
Okay.
Yes. But going forward, we will be tracking that to make sure it counts towards our RENA numbers.
And since the passing of the SB ten sixty-nine, have we received any application?
I want to, yes, we've seen, we've received inquiries as to actual applications. That would be something that would be reviewed during the permit plan check process, most likely. So at this point, we've only received inquiries about this, and when people come in, we give them the new law and what those development standards are.
Right, because if we can get those data and we can reflect that to reduce the number of unmet need for the RHNA. Then another question is on, on HE eighty-one, it's about regional housing need assessment Line item number one, ten-ten, South El Camino Real. This project is not affordable housing, right? So that can go away, that can be removed from the table.
I'm, I'm sorry.
This is Santiago project.
You're talking ten-ten South El Camino Real?
Table fifty-four.
Top line of the...
Oh, okay, so that's Santiago.
Since this body about two years ago went through a long strenuous exercise on permitting that particular site.
Mm-hmm, yeah, that will need to be...
So affordable housing is going to be, it's not a mandatory thing. We cannot ask, ask a property owner within that affordable housing overlay zone to provide affordable housing. It's by their choice.
Correct.
The city is required to provide opportunities for those housing units to be developed, but it is not a requirement. What is a requirement in our zoning ordinance is that if you develop six or more units, you have some type of inclusionary housing or you pay in roof fee for affordable housing.
Right. Okay.
So let me understand, so this table, when I was reading it, I took it to mean, and I just want to be clear, I saw, you know, these vacancies, for instance. If there's an empty lot, then we're saying that's a potential for affordable housing unit, so it's part of the inventory that we can present, is that correct?
Um, yes, that's correct, but it kind of makes up a couple things. So we look at maybe potential sites that are significantly underutilized. If you think of a site that maybe is owned commercial but has an older single-family home on it, that's probably at the end of its lifespan, we would include a property like that. If it's a, affordable housing is also allowed by right in residential zones, right? So if we had larger parcels or vacant parcel in a residential area, we try to identify those as well. So this list will have mixed-use zones, as well as commercial zones in some residential sites.
So this one, ten-ten South El Camino Real, that is a vacant lot right now. Am I remembering that correctly?
Correct.
They pulled their building permits, and so that has been entitled, so that should probably come off.
They pulled, oh, they did pull their building permits.
Okay.
Just because they have the permit, doesn't mean they're going to build it.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah. So that's why I was wondering if it's, until there's not an affordable housing thing, I thought, so.
That's true.
But we look at all the, all the sites, we decide they have a potential to develop a six-hundred-something home there. Out of that, we need two-hundred-something to be affordable, and that's a huge challenge. And yeah, look at the number, it's possible, but the reality is, we've met the above moderate, above, above moderate income, but for the moderate one, we're, there are a huge gap there. And there's a big gap for low income and extremely low income.
Stating the obvious, that's true.
So, so given that circumstance, is there any requirement from the housing department from the state that, whether we need...
This reflects what was submitted on the current one, and they have accepted that.
Okay.
So we are proposing the same sites that they've already accepted, so we're anticipating them to accept them again.
Okay. All right.
I think, thank you. Remember, Jim, there were, during the final throes of the general plan, we started about ten o'clock one night and started populating the overlay with all sorts of this table. You know, when we're, we were imminently brain-dead after about four or five hours of meetings. The usual last subject on the calendar was to plug in properties for this. I, by the way, suggested, and she's picked up on it on page HE eighty-seven, there's four lots down on Avenue de Rosa.
Yes, thank you.
They're empty. And the reason I brought that up to them is probably one of the early planning sessions we, or study sessions we had, as I came on the planning commission, was Habitat for Humanity came to town, and we're interested in those lots. The neighborhood got a little sensitive about parking and the other, because they were just building the senior center down there, but it's still a great area for workforce housing, because of where it's located there on Rosa, which is like two blocks over from Del Mar, and they are empty lots, just south of the fire station. So I suggested that, and they put it in. I think it's a good one, and I checked with a former city council member that knows the owner, and I don't, we need to run that trap line, but it's a perfect location for workforce housing, and Habitat for Humanity was, in fact, looking at that property. And they're a very responsible developer, too. So that's why those last four got put in there, and I think it's a very good add. Okay, continue on, Commissioner Wu, you're done. Okay. Is there any more to submit? Christopher Wu?
Yeah, I just had a question about lot consolidation program. I'm interested in hearing a little bit about that. In particular, I just wanted to understand its effect on kind of historic city layouts, particularly the T-zone. Are we looking at lot consolidation in the T-zone and things like that? I don't recall.
That's a million-dollar question. So, you know, what, what's hard is, you know, the older cities are made up of very small lots in a lot of cases. You bring up a good example of the T-zone in Del Mar. And what is recognized is that if you are able to consolidate lots and make them larger... And what is recognized is that if you are able to consolidate lots and make them larger, that their development potential is increased. And it's, the city's goal is to remove impediments of lot consolidation, to make it easier to consolidate lots. That's one of the goals of HCD, and so that's why that program is in there.
Okay. I, I guess my, I didn't see anything in here, maybe I missed it, but I, and maybe it, maybe its place isn't in here, because we haven't gotten to it, but years ago, we would talk about if we built larger structures, this conversation went away after, I think, the three-story conversation, but then we would, but if we built larger structures, say, in the T-zone, lot consolidation, we would still reflect the original lot configurations. The building architecture would still reflect...
Sandborne plots, that was, that was put into the general plan under the two versus three-story issue down on Del Mar.
So, you know...
An extensive series of issues that staff wrote in that we approved.
Right, not, not to get into elaboration discussion here, but I just wanted, I was just trying to see if this was still compatible with that thinking that we had done in the past.
What we've committed to is looking at ways that, if a lot consolidation came in, to remove government constraints on processing those lot consolidations.
Okay.
I think to further clarify, Jim, what we did in Del Mar was, you did a lot of consolidate down there, but the great concern was somebody would come in and buy six lots, and then now we would put in a three-story building down there. And so, the, the design guidelines that were put in place, that staff brought up with, you'd follow the sandborne original survey from 1928, and you'd have to have articulation, and so that you couldn't have someone come in, like what was gonna happen to, next to the old historic city hall, which, remember, the olden company was gonna come in and do some of which was now the bed, bed thing, there was gonna be this three-story, very nicely done, but, you know, very large, and so that, that would trigger the entire huge uproar that we went through there.
Right. And do we have, because I know we had talked about guidelines and things like that, but I can't remember if we actually laid, sort of laid down the law in terms of following those sandborne maps in our architectural guidelines, so that is part of it?
It is in that section of the general plan.
Great, so, so this is not incompatible, even if we remove government obstructions to lot consolidation, they still would need to reflect those sandborne maps in the architectural construction.
Correct.
Great.
And the design guidelines and the articulations and...
Maintain the character.
Exactly.
Good.
The sixty-foot, fifty-foot line.
Yeah, I just couldn't remember how, how, how we had nailed that down before, so.
It is in the general plan.
Great.
We're covered. Commissioner Tally?
Okay, so, I have a, I guess, a kind of a procedural question here, so I'm looking at the proposed resolution that we have.
Yeah.
And, and it has, under section four, the findings, which is, the proposed amendment will not adversely affect public health, safety, and welfare. And so, if you remember, what seems like months ago, it was in all actuality only several weeks ago, when we were considering the, the last, I guess, the last version of this for the prior four years, for updating it for HCD, there was discussion wrapped around the three hundred-foot separation that existed as being necessary for at least a majority of us to find, to make that finding. So, I'm trying to reconcile my, my view two weeks ago with the finding that we have to make tonight, and so, I, I find a couple of, of potential ways for me to make that finding, and I'm hoping you can help me with that. So, the housing element update, the update, what are we updating from what was approved, right? Because if I'm not having to update the emergency shelter overlay, then I could probably make that finding, but if I'm actually being forced to make an update that removes the three hundred-foot separation for single-service providers, I can't make that finding, because that would be inconsistent with my statement of two weeks ago. Does that make, does that make sense?
Yes.
So, I'm asking you to help me...
Yes.
Be able to articulate what the update is.
So, let me help you articulate that by clarifying your concern.
Okay.
So, what you are being asked to update is our progress towards what we've committed to in the approved housing element. The approved housing element already states that the three hundred-foot separation requirement for same shelter operators has been removed.
Okay.
So, you are not being asked to update that, that's already been approved by the city council, so that is not within your purview here.
That was last night.
So, things that are being updated are 2017 numbers, our progress on meeting programs, are, are some of those items, but that particular one that you're talking about is not something that you are approving an update on, that's already been reviewed by the Planning Commission.
So, just so that we're all on the same page, and I'm on the record, if I believe, and maybe council can correct it, if I believe that that component, right, the three hundred-foot separation that's waived for single-service operators, does affect the public health, safety, and welfare, that does not preclude me from making the finding on the update tonight.
That's correct, because that element is not being reviewed this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Are we, are we getting, rather, getting to an endgame here?
I'm done.
I'd like to make one final statement that came out of the, the work-study workshop of several weeks ago, which, Ms. Tally, you were not present for, because you came in actually for the actual hearing.
Mm-hmm.
And we had a very, I think, and I'd like to capture this in the, in the amendments, but we had a, a very, I think, important input by Ms. Perdue, who's the executive director of Family Assistance Ministries, who was there that night, and later appeared in front of the Safety Task Force. And I want to go on the record, and I want you to firmly know, and I want you to firmly bring up to that judge, that FAM has been and is now in that zoned area, and they provide a huge service to homeless, and they survive there, and they're operating there, and they do very well there. And in fact, if you look at the ministry approved tonight, they had like 139 requests on their own account by lift to bring people to them. And so, I want you to firmly bring up to that court and Shelter Coalition, because they were presented at the council last night, very similarly to a letter that we had two weeks ago about other areas and whatever, that the area that we have zoned, there is a shelter operator there now, has been there now, and is doing quite well and very successful there now. And I would, I would urge the staff to provide you the specific numbers that Ms. Perdue mentioned, because the notes do not reflect that, of the several hundred people last year that they assisted, and they're in that area, and they're doing well, along with other nonprofits. And so, I want you to be really smart on that, going to court. I might even show up in court just for quality assurance purposes, to make sure that you firmly make the point to that judge and that coalition, that this is a viable zone, because people are there now doing it. You understand?
I do, I'm, I'm hopeful that we won't get to that issue in the legal proceedings, because of where we are procedurally, but just so you know, the record before the court reflects that FAM is located in the Business Park, in fact, that was, that was one of the criteria that staff used to determine that the Business Park was a suitable location for the overlay zone, and that has been briefed in our court papers.
And make the opportunity to bring it up again at your convenience. I know you won't disappoint me. Okay, are we, have we had enough of this? Mr. Crandall?
I'm ready to make a motion, if everybody's done with discussion.
Okay, let's do it.
Okay, with the understanding that the three hundred-foot item is not being reviewed tonight, I move we approve Resolution Number 17028, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Clemente, California, directing staff to submit the draft 2013 through 2021 Housing Element Midterm Update to the Department of Housing and Community Development for review, and recommends that the city council approve a general plan amendment, GPA 17261, to adopt the 2013 to 2021 Housing Element Midterm Update, with the understanding that staff is going to update sections in the plan to reflect the new housing element that was approved by city council last night.
Second.
Okay, a move, motion by Crandall, second by Commissioner Wu, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven-zero.
Can I ask that we be provided an update of what HCD comes back with? Since we won't see it before it goes to council.
And we review this again when? Is it two years, four years?
2021, so it'll start coming before you in 2020.
On time.
That's the goal. Always the goal.
So, we are limited to two years, one goes over.
You have a really steep, you have a steep hill...
It's four years, so you have...
No, but weren't, weren't we shortened?
We are, right now, that's what you're doing.
So, it's not gonna continue.
So, we have to adopt two, four years on time in a row to get placed on the regular eight-year cycle.
On the eight, so we get one more, four-year?
Yes.
2021.
Okay, that's what I want.
And a steep hill to climb to get there.
Yeah, we'll do 2021, then you'll have one in 2025, and then we, because it, it has to be two consecutive years, so.
This topic coming back?
We'll keep housing at the forefront.
Is this topic coming back in two years?
Kind of a full menu, might want to keep it three years.
No, you're done, you're done.
Reference to future use.
Twenty twenty.
Until four years later, or eight?
What's...
Four.
Four.
Okay.
Okay. With that, we'll proceed on to item nine, A, New Business, Updated Engineering and Traffic Survey for Posted Speed Limits on Camino Rio, Camino de los Maris, and El Camino Real. And just in time with the drums rolling, our famous traffic engineer.
Good evening.
Okay.
Good evening, planning commissioners, my name's Tom Frank.
Victor Agua, or whatever.
Yeah, no, not, not today. My name's Tom Frank, Transportation Engineering Manager, and I'm here today to present and see if you have any questions regarding our speed survey updates for the streets that are listed in the report in front of you. So, I didn't know if you wanted me to go through kind of a brief update or a report, or just answer any questions which you may have. It's very similar to the engineer report, which we did a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, I do have a question on the recommendation of the speed limits, forty on Camino, Del Rio, what is it now?
It's forty.
It is forty.
It is forty, right.
And forty-five on Camino, Los Maris, that's what I saw today, so...
That's correct, right.
And forty-five on North El Camino, is that an increase?
That's the same.
Same.
Right.
So, these are all the same?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'd just like to say that I reached out to Tom, I think, last week, and he provided all of the raw data underneath this, so, thank you, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
It was, got to start plotting stuff.
Oh, yeah.
Was there any...
Commissioner Wu? Yeah, I, since a lot of these speed limits are the same, as I recall, a number of these changes, the hope was to get some traffic calming effect out of it.
Right.
The speed limits are the same, but was there any more subtle changes or anything, anything we saw that might tell us that there was some traffic calming that we accomplished?
Yeah, on Camino Del Rio, there, there is traffic coming near the intersections with the roundabouts, but we take the speed limits in between the areas where there's unimpeded flow, so there is traffic coming where there is the roundabouts and the intersections.
I see, okay.
Yeah.
Commissioner Smith?
Well, I do read the local newspapers, both of them, and there's been some letters to the editor about this particular area, from a lot of the constituents, saying that the cars are going way too fast, drag racing, blah, 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 and they're not very happy about it. And so, we're proposing to do nothing about that, what do we think we can do to respond to those citizens that are unhappy about what's happening there?
Well, we have a traffic calming program, and they could submit a petition to, for the city to further look at that issue. I know they're also asking for some enforcement, but those, I guess, are my recommendations, that they could submit a traffic calming petition, and we can go through the process and see if additional things are...
These traffic studies to council and approve, so that can be enforced.
Right, separate issue, right, we are bringing these to council, actually, at the next council meeting.
The neighborhoods are asking for black and whites in the neighborhood, and black and whites write a ticket, because our local Tesla drag racer could, could do sixty-five miles an hour, and he's gonna get off, because it's not enforceable, so, one of the important things we can do for traffic calming is, in fact, pass this traffic study on to city councils for approval, so that dealing comes into force. Commissioner Wu?
Yes, Frank, for all the other streets, and you lowered the speed limit by five, but on El Camino Real, the eighty-fifth percentile is forty-six, and your comments and the recommendation says, based on the speed survey, high-volume bicyclist, and MetroLink train station nearby, it is, it is recommended to post a speed limit on this segment of El Camino Real at forty-five miles per hour. You don't need any reason to post a speed limit the same as the eighty-five percentile.
No, we didn't need a reason, we just didn't feel that it was harmful to include that language.
When you say, based on these, based on that, it alludes people to, to expect that you would lower the speed limit by five miles per hour.
Also divided it up with a class, protective class.
Right, we were just kind of acknowledging the existing conditions, but we could have recommended that we lowered it to forty, but we chose not to, given the current conditions out there, with the separated Class One bike path.
What, what make you to decide whether you lower the speed limit by five or not?
Yeah, that's, that's actually a really good question, so, like, a good example is why did we chose to lower the speed limit by that five mile-per-hour increment on Camino Del Rio versus El Camino Real, and Commissioner Brown, or Chair Brown, actually brought up the point where we have a separated Class One bike facility on that roadway, so, the users are the bicyclists, the vehicular bicyclists, who don't like to ride next to the vehicles, they can take the option of riding in that Class One, but on Camino Del Rio, we don't have that separated Class One bike facility, so the bicyclists are then riding next to, in the Buffett area, but they are riding next to the vehicular travel lanes.
Okay.
That combined with, it's a safe route to school with a school nearby, and the immediate adjacent neighborhoods were the reasons why we did choose to lower, or recommend lowering that speed limit by five miles per hour.
Okay, okay. I, I think...
So, you're right, though, we could eliminate that wording from that report, but I didn't find it harmful.
Going with the forty-eighty-five percentile is by default.
Yeah, absolutely. That's state law.
So, if you say those things, but, I mean, I would expect you to further explain, but because, because the fact that we have a dedicated, dedicated bike lane there, and they're more or less protected, we don't need to lower it, or you don't need to say anything, you just...
You, you have a valid point, so maybe next time, we won't say anything if we're not choosing to lower the speed limit by the five mile-per-hour increment.
But just for curiosity, for El Camino Real, the bicyclists have a choice to go into a dedicated bike lane, or stay on the, or share the travel lane with the cars?
Or take the road.
Right.
That's right.
Okay, you cannot force them to not to get on the road, and go to the bike lane only.
No, you can't, and that's actually part of the reason why we included the Class Two bike lanes out there, because we, we were getting comments like, well, why are you giving so much space to the bicyclists and, and not to the vehicles? And, and the reason why, one of the reasons why is exactly what you said, you can't require a bicyclist to ride in the Class One bike facility, and if you didn't have the bike lanes, then they would be taking the lane, a vehicular travel lane, so that would then slow down traffic dramatically, so that's why we put in the Class Two bike lanes.
But you can eliminate that bike lane next to the travel, next to the normal travel lane, right? You can, you don't have to provide a bike lane, because you, we already have the dedicated bike lane.
And the reason why, one of the reasons why is exactly what you said, you can't require a bicyclist to ride in the Class One bike facility, and if you didn't have the bike lanes, then they would be taking the lane, a vehicular travel lane, so that would then slow down traffic dramatically. So that's why we put in the Class Two bike lanes.
But you can eliminate that bike lane next to the travel, next to the normal travel lane, right? You can, you don't have to provide a bike lane, because we already have the dedicated bike lane.
We went through the?
The bike lane is all the shoulder.
It's kind of re, re.
Okay. In the bicycle master plan, we studied this in and out, and the sports bicycles actually prefer to go with traffic on the street.
Okay.
We've got pedestrians and beach cruisers in the bike lanes protected.
Yeah, they don't want to be slowed down.
There's a lot of accidents that are going to happen with the bicycles and those beach cruisers and pedestrians than having them go with the flow of traffic in a bike lane.
Okay.
One additional comment, since we're talking about that subject, though, is we did do traffic counts out there, this is just to get the information out there, because some comments we've heard is, well, it appears that there's restrictions in traffic flow on the roadway, and so we did traffic counts, and the statistics show that we're actually receiving twenty-five percent more vehicular traffic flow through the segment between Camino San Clemente and Camino Capistrano than we were prior to the project. So, you know, our objectives to improve vehicular traffic flow through that segment were accurate according to the data currently, so.
Yeah.
What's happening is, it does look more congested, because you're seeing overflow traffic from the freeway. It's the freeway congestion that causes then the cut-through traffic, which then increases the traffic volume, and we could never build enough travel lanes to accommodate the freeway traffic.
Well, I think also what we're seeing there is with the bulb out, you have shorter walking distance for people trying to get to the beach.
Right, that actually helps the?
So actually, you're getting more green time.
That's right.
Throughput, because you don't have to have the walking signal on as long, because we've made that section narrow, even though we still have the dedicated right turn lanes.
That's correct.
That's actually increasing your throughput is that bulb out, so subtly there, but it's very effective. Commissioner Ruen, you've been waiting very patiently to have that.
Okay, so you, for the El Camino Real section, you listed that at forty-five miles an hour, which is the same as it's been, but you could have recommended five miles an hour less, correct?
Correct.
There's been a lot of, obviously, conversations about, you know, those roads have narrowed, and there's not a separation there, and that sort of a thing, so maybe you could kind of give us some insight as to why you didn't decide to lower that further, given, you know, what people have been saying about, some of their concerns about it over the last year or so?
Right, so I think you, maybe, okay, the rationale was, actually, in segments of that, the speeds are a little bit lower, but the segment which we're seeing the higher speeds were, is between, it's a straightaway basically, between Camino San Clemente and Estachion, where there's not the median, there's not a landscape median until you get to Avenida Estachion. In that segment, it was closer to forty-five, but the rationale why we felt comfortable keeping it at that speed limit is, we have seven-foot Class Two bike lanes in that area, and there's no curb, there's no gutter along the curb line there. So if you think about it, most of the curbs in San Clemente and the developed areas where you have curb and gutter, it's curb and gutter, and the gutter can typically be two feet, but in that area, you have a seven-foot bike lane, and most of that alignment does not have an adjacent gutter, so you have seven feet of usable bike lane, so that the bicyclists, if they choose to, can get quite a ways away from that travel lane.
And what about the concern that people had of, that they expressed that with the lanes are narrower, and there's no, except for the rumble strip that was put in there, there's no separation between the opposing traffic?
Right.
Is that really, is that something to be concerned with in terms of safety, or?
We actually have eleven-foot travel lanes in that area, so those are more than adequate for an arterial, a city arterial travel lane. Typically, they would, the lane widths would vary between ten to eleven feet, so in that segment, we actually have pretty wide travel lanes. So we looked at balance, as Commissioner Crandall said, we spent hours and days and many meetings on this, reviewing what's the best balance of lanes in that, to fit within that rightaway for that project.
Some people had made a lot of, had a lot of concern about that stretch, but the same token, you go from Extension all the way to Christianitas, and El Camino Real is a four-lane road with no dividers, no rumble strips, and speeds at thirty-five to forty-five miles per hour.
Right, and ten?
All the way through town, and nobody has a concern about that. And so it's kind of like, okay, really, you don't, four miles of four-lane road, and nobody has a complaint about it, and one mile with two lanes on it?
Actually, it's a half mile, because most, a lot of that road segment actually does have a separated median or?
It does. So I mean, there's kind of a, you know, a dose of reality here, which you drive every day for the rest of El Camino Real, this county line, so it's interesting, just a comment.
Yeah, and the other bit, if you're talking about that center line, if you do create a separated center line and you provide the wider travel lanes, then the speeds tend to go up, and fatalities proportional to the rate of speed on the roadway. So that was another reason why we didn't do that.
Commissioner Tally, you had your light on for quite a while, followed by Blackwell.
I was just going to comment on the traffic calming questions relating to Camino Del Rio and some of those back there. So I live back there, and I travel there almost every day, as well as I'm on the Homes Association for Forester Highlands, and so, you know, a lot of what our neighbors were complaining about down there was the noise, which I think is being, is being addressed. I will say, from a purely qualitative observation, absent those that just accelerate to forty miles an hour very rapidly, I might add, in a Tesla. The, the roundabouts do have a significant impact on calming that traffic, and especially around a school hour when there's children crossing and such, so you've got the intermediate speed limits between them, but they, it is not going fast for a long time. So, nice job getting those in.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Blackwell?
Thank you. Hey, Tom, so we are terminating the study area at Camino de las Madres and Veracruz. Okay, so what's happening on Camino de las Madres, south of Veracruz, in the future? And how are we going to tie them together so there's continuity in speeds?
Camino de los Maris, or south of?
Yes, Camino de las Madres. So our study area stops at Veracruz.
Right, correct, yeah.
So traveling south beyond the study area?
Yeah, there's no change in that area.
Okay, so our flows now, our traffic limitations are going to be consistent all the way to the terminus of Camino de las Madres?
That's correct, yeah.
They did a, they did a road diet on that section all the way to Vaquero a couple of years ago, which we approved, where?
Well, it wasn't really a road diet, it was just a reconfiguration of the travel lanes.
Reconfiguration with the Class Two lanes.
Yeah.
Gee, we just lost all our screens here. So there's a consistent speed limit and bicycle path, and good, so it's all consistent to Vaquero.
So we're taking forty-five miles an hour all the way through?
That's correct, to Vaquero, right.
All right, thank you.
The next challenge is the rest of the way.
Well, we did talk about this traffic circle model, possibly carrying through the rest of the city where applicable, and there was some light discussion on that intersection. Are we looking at that again?
The current intersection evaluation we're doing right now is on Camino Veracruz at Costa, near the school and the park, and so we have a draft evaluation study done, and we're moving through the review process, and you'll see that one shortly.
That was kind of slipped into the SIP that we approved last May for consistency. There's, so he's incrementally slipping little traffic circles in everywhere.
Well, that's, it's not me, I take my direction from city manager and council, and you can talk with your council members, yeah. I'm not slipping anything in. Just want to clarify that, yeah.
So what is that, what is on Camino Veracruz and Costa, you're thinking about placing a traffic circle?
Right, as Chair Brown had said, the council approved funding for CIP project for us to evaluate and construct intersection improvements at that intersection, and so a part of that, we do an intersection control evaluation per MUTCD, and basically what that is, is we determine what's the most feasible and effective type of intersection control. So just a real super quick refresher course, there's really like four options. You have non-controlled or partially controlled with a stop on each side, which is what exists today. You have an always stop or a three-way stop. You have a traffic signal, which we have a lot of, we have like eighty in town, and then you have a round, then you have roundabouts.
Next block down, sir, until so you do have the light.
Yeah, then you have roundabouts, and we have two of those. So you do the evaluation, and you do a matrix to determine what's the best, most feasible and best alternative, preferred alternative.
And you're famous for public outreach and going and talking.
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, like, it was the same thing we did on Camino Del Rio, you know, we're your, we're your technical experts, and we provide recommendations, but we definitely solicit and listen to the community input.
So have you solicited and listened to community input there?
We did, we've had one, one community meeting, and we completed a draft intersection control evaluation, and we're moving forward with it to the next phase.
Would you keep me involved on that?
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
Because I go down there every day, and I want to make sure that you account for the sun coming over the hill.
Okay.
No, I mean, no, 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 I mean, I've seen six cars pile into each other right there, because it's absolutely blinding, so I am, I'm very worried about some type of, any type of a change from straightened, straightened level to?
It's coming down a hill right there, though, right?
That's, I have that same situation at certain times of the year on many streets that I drive, but that, no matter what you put, or you don't put at that intersection, you're still going to have the psych constraint.
Except you have a crossing guard at that intersection right now.
Right, you do, right.
And so you may lose that if there was some assistance there.
I'm not sure, but I'll consider that point, yeah.
I mean, I'm not aware of the community outreach.
I think that's a city-funded crossing guard right there, too, so.
It's a what?
I think that's a city-funded crossing guard right there, so, because the school district dropped the ball on that.
Please, I'll make sure I get neighbors.
We about wrapped this up here, oh, we have some more questions. Commissioner Smith?
The roundabout at Caminos Los Maris and Del Rio was approved by us some time ago, and?
Your light on, please, your microphone on?
Oh, sorry. And I drove that area today, the streets, the speed limits and things, to see what I felt about it, and I had the impression about the roundabout that it seems to be working, but there were some kind of close calls, I went through about four times, and some drivers are supposed to yield, and they didn't really yield, they kind of pulled out, and it's a little tricky, and my question to you is really very simple. What's happening there? Are we having any accidents? Are we able to abide by that? Is it working, is it not working? What's the story on it so far?
Yeah, so a couple of points on, good questions, and a couple of points on the subject. Is one, by the inherent nature of a roundabout, there are going to be close calls, and that's what makes them so safe, it's that, you know, people are cautious when they approach them, because they're not quite sure who's going where, and you yield to the left, so it's by design that, you know, you're going to feel a little uncomfortable, and there are going to be closer, or it feels like closer calls. To help with that situation, to help you maneuver safely through it, and give indication to other drivers what you're doing, always make eye contact when you can, especially if you're not in your car, if you're a pedestrian or a bicyclist. And then the other tip, which I think I'm going to somehow try and do a public outreach or a public education program, is to get people to use their turn signals.
Absolutely.
Yeah, at the roundabouts.
Then don't?
That helps a lot, because a lot of times, people don't know which direction you're exiting to, and if you use your turn signals, then they'll really yield, because I go through roundabouts like five or six times a day, just in my daily commute, and if you don't use the signals, you get much worse driver behavior than if you use your signals. And then the last thing is, just be cautious, you're going to have people that blow through them, it's not worth getting in accidents. I always try and educate the people, so when I'm coming left and they're blowing through it, I act like I'm going to hit them, and they go, "Oh," and they get freaked out, and they're like, "Oh," and, you know, I don't even honk anymore, I just, and then I?
Russ is a traffic idiot right there.
Because it's an educational process, so I scare them. I scare them, and I'm like, hey, yield sign, you know, I don't even honk anymore, I'm like, hey, yield sign, you're supposed to yield, and they're like, "Oh," correct?
Every time, every city park.
But, you know, it's, you get, you get bad driver behavior out there, and people are starting to learn how to use them, and?
Yeah, my experience today was that there was a car coming that was supposed to yield.
Right.
And it didn't.
Right.
It went right in front of me, and I had to really slow down.
Yeah.
But you didn't answer my question specifically, are we finding a bunch of incidents there or not?
No. I have not heard of any incidents at any roundabouts, yeah.
Did you have your head out the window as you were doing the donuts?
Yeah, yeah, that's, you'll see that sometimes, too, yeah.
So we can wrap this up here fairly quickly here. Commissioner Wu, you've been very patient to?
I have one more question about the intersection at El Camino Real, North El Camino Real, and the MetroLink station, the intersection with, the beginning of this, this speed limited zone.
Avenida Estachion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That intersection, the merging lane, after the intersection seemed to be pretty short.
Right.
And I had one close call, and there's, there's oncoming traffic on the other side, I almost need to get across the mid, the median, so that by design, is that, is that anything that can be improved?
I'm not, I don't think it can be?
You don't have enough length to merge into one lane.
Right, we don't, we just don't have the additional length, you're right, it is on the shorter side for a merge.
And which side is the merging lane, and which side is the main one?
Right, well, it's as it's signed right now, so it's merging from left to right, but you could merge it the other way.
Well, the left lane is so short.
Correct, yeah.
Is there anything we can do to improve it?
We've had comments both ways on the subject, so right now, we're observing it, but your comment is heard. Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make a motion if there's other comments. I'll move that we forward to the city council, a recommendation to approve the posted speed limit of forty miles an hour on Camino Del Rio, forty-five miles per hour on Camino de los Maris, and forty-five miles per hour on North El Camino Real, based on the engineering and traffic survey.
I have a motion by Commissioner Ruen, second by Commissioner Smith, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes seven zero. We now have to circle back around, I think, to item six. We had a lady show up late tonight, I guess didn't, wasn't aware when we started our meeting, and she wants to talk a public comment period over something that does not appear on our, on our, on our agenda tonight. So Ms. Kathy Waite requests an update on the Lifetime Fitness slash Rancho San Clemente project.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak, and I was under misinformation that the meeting started at seven, so that's why I got here about quarter of. Just asking some questions on the Rancho San Clemente Lifetime Fitness Facility, mainly an update, when Audrey Giddings spoke on August sixteenth, the planning commission had approved the plans, I'm assuming that it then went to the city council?
It does not come to the planning commission.
It does not?
Just to clarify, somebody came at that meeting and asked for an update at that meeting as well, to find out what, what the process was, and we had said that they're continuing through the public review period, and that there was a mitigated negative declaration that was being drafted.
Can you explain mitigated?
It's an environmental review.
Okay.
So the environmental review is, was drafted, I apologize for that. And they had given staff the draft, we're reviewing that currently, I believe we've provided comments, and, forgive me, I'm not the project planner on it, so I'm just speaking generally. So we are now coming up with a timeframe to move it forward, there is a twenty-day public comment period that's required, so those notices will be going out when that document is ready for public review, and then it will come to planning commission for their review. Right now, our estimated time is October for planning commission to review that item.
Okay, I was, given the information that the planning committee had approved it, that's why, that was my first question, so it's not been approved.
The design review subcommittee.
The design I was aware of.
Yeah, the design review subcommittee has reviewed and moved that to forward in the review process, so that has been approved, but planning commission has not.
And then on the environmental report, what's the timeframe, I was told on that was, could be up to six months.
So we will, we're hoping to anticipate, or we're anticipating releasing that document in the actual next couple of weeks, not six months, the next couple of weeks.
I guess I mean the approval of it.
The approval, the approval will be decided by the hearing body, in this case, the planning commission, so our goal is to have that to planning commission for their review in October.
Okay, so October's our, our big timeframe right here. How can the members of the tennis club, which I have a couple of the other gals here, how can we help? club, which I have a couple of the other gals here, how can we help shorten the timeframe? We've been all displaced from our tennis home. I've been a member of Rancho San Clemente since 1986, and obviously, they closed to refurbish, which is long overdue. But now, we're at a setting that there's no place for us to play locally. You can't reserve courts here, you just try to show up. You're looking at 150 or so people that have been displaced and obviously gone other places. But how can we help move this through? What is the best way for us to get involved?
The best way to help is, the timeframes unfortunately are stipulated by state law requirements. There's a certain public review period time that has to be adhered to, staff needs time to review the document, public agencies have the ability to comment. So, I think the best way for you to stay involved is to watch for the public notices. I don't know if you live in the area, the site will be posted.
And that's the public review?
I'm sorry?
That's the public review that goes to the people in the area?
Exactly, and then to also watch for when the item will come to the planning commission meeting, and make sure you're here to voice your opinion on that.
So, we could call ahead of time and see if it's on that?
Yes, and you can always-
Because I did call before.
Yes, and you can always check the website, too. That's a very fast way to review that on specific agendas.
You can see it on our schedule, it's posted out there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let me also inject that a mitigated negative declaration is a mini environmental impact report, a full, not a full EIR or SEQA, but is not a simple document. And so, a mitigated neg deck is, a short term for it, is actually a very extensive environmental review that the site required. So, it's, you know, maybe a document that thick, I don't know, I'm just speculation. I know that the entire I-5 freeway project you're suffering through right now was a 1,200-page mitigated negative declaration that I got to read about seven or eight years ago. So, I mean, these are difficult to do, and that's what's causing the project delay, is that applicant, based on the area they're in and what they proposed, state law requires this form of environmental review. So, it's, for them, the applicant has been a very lengthy undertaking, but it's just came with the turf, okay?
Yeah, I'd like to add something there if I can.
Sure.
I'm familiar with a number of players for the tennis club, they were my book club, so we talk about it and I update them. So, I do think there was a lot of thought that there was an approval by the planning commission. As you just heard, though, it was by the design review, and that's not the same as a planning commission. Part of the angst here is that the new owner, Lifetime, decided to close the club way early in the process when he could have kept it open, and I think that's a decision that they made that's unfair to you, because it could have been open and then closed much closer to the final approvals. What I've heard from my fellow book club members is that they're, they're having a good success of going to Mission Viejo to play, so you might look into that.
That's where we are.
Yeah.
We have three teams there. Well, actually, four. But then, others, you know, we've all kind of dispersed and found places that could house us. But then, the non-league players have not, and it's very interesting cord hopping to try to find a place to play, because there's no reservation.
Commissioner Tally?
Yes, I just want to make sure you understand that these documents that we're talking about have to be prepared initially by the applicant, in this case, Lifetime. So, it's not as if you've been waiting on city staff for, you know, months to prepare these documents. The timing and urgency that they proceeded with really set the pace for a lot of this. There is a review period that I believe city staff is candidly working as fast as possible on because of the community's concerns, right? And here in October, I was actually expecting to see this in December or January, so I know with-
It's positive.
I know with all of the work that they have on their plate, they have made this a priority. But, much as you heard Commissioner Smith state, you know, the decision to close it was, I guess, a commercial decision made by Lifetime, and the speed at which they're getting it reopened in many respects is also Lifetime's decision. So, we can only approve what comes before us, and they have the burden of doing a lot of that. So, I just wanted to make sure you understood it. The city's moving is actually very fast on this, so thank you for it.
Also, it's been said that you have to outsource some parts of the reports. So, at least at the August 16th, that was a comment made, that it had to go outside San Clemente to work through it, and that was why it would take longer.
Well, I was there, but-
That's not us, that was the applicant having to do that. There's a peer review that has to be done to make sure that, you know, the reports actually, you know, kind of meets the legitimacy that's required for us to make a determination. But, the work that has to be done, the burden of that is on the applicant or Lifetime in this case. So, we've kind of all been waiting on them to get stuff.
But they have filed the environmental part or whatever they have to do. They are up to, they have told me, because I've contacted them, that they are up to, they have already submitted everything they're supposed to submit at this point, because I'll go back and ask them.
I believe that that's what we just heard from our city planner, is that they have the, you know, this document is, Chair Brown said, could be, it has to be reviewed. You want that as a citizen here, for that to be reviewed. So, that does take a little bit of time, which I think city staff is accelerating. I mean, that's actually very impressive.
It's really interesting reading. Mr. Tally, Randall? Amber, stop me if I'm incorrect, but the one thing you probably can do is have the membership, anybody's playing, have the new operator, get all your names and addresses, and have them, provide them to the city to be included on the notification list of when items are being heard. So, that's basically, there's a public notice, it's usually just determined by a circle around the site and people with them. But if you get on the list and have the applicant, I think would have to be the applicant, provide it, to be on the-
You would just, I apologize, I missed your name.
Then, all the members would be notified.
I gave Kathy my contact information. If you contact me outside of this, we can talk about notification. There's a list, and you would give that to the city directly, and we would notify you. But, we can go ahead and follow up with that.
Okay, fine, I think that's enough.
Just have one more question.
Well, you're actually out of time, make it short.
I will.
Way out of time.
Thank you. The site appears abandoned. If you, I go up there frequently to check it out, with no maintenance or security. And according to some social media posts, homeowners' association, the Rancho San Clemente Association has contacted the city and Lifetime, asking for, asking about the situation and concerns. Probably three of the main ones were questionable gatherings of cars in the parking lot by young people, which I have observed. Not as a parent, I sure wouldn't want to see my kids getting in and out of cars, doing things. Skateboarders in the parking lot and in the drain pool, homeless trying to use the premises. So, I'm looking for maybe some solutions on that. And I don't know if it's all Lifetime's issue there.
It is.
The people that live in the area, the ones who see this stuff, as well as, you know, I go by there, so.
Code enforcement's been contacted. There is an open code enforcement case, or code compliance case, to make them aware, and we've reached out to the applicant directly, and they have said they're going to do maintenance, if they haven't already.
Well, they have maintenance inside.
This was having landscaping, but we can follow up with them again.
Okay.
But it is code compliance.
So, it's them. It's Lifetime Fitness, the applicant.
You can call code compliance, or if you see something questionable down there, call the police, call the sheriff. You know, if there's something going, you know, if there's something you think is illegal or threatening down there.
I'd say morally, not threatening.
There was a recent case here where the sheriff got called, and, you know, they actually were posting that they wish more citizens would call when there was suspicious activity. So, call them.
There's a non-911 number available, or, you know, if you feel threatened, call 911.
Okay, thank you very much.
Excuse me, did you say that the kids are in the pool? Isn't that screened off, or is it open?
Well, they can jump over.
I'm trying to like fence.
I mean, there's a fence, it's a good fence, but it's a perfect skateboarder.
But it is closed off. There is a fence, okay.
I don't know if it's posted for no trespassing by the applicant or not, that's another consideration.
That's a question.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
I have, Amber, this is, I think this is the third time I hear about this issue. Last meeting, we had someone come over and ask about it, and tonight, and in the middle, there was another gentleman. He sent an email to me, I copied you about that. Is there any way we can post some updated information, so the general public or people who are interested or anxious to see the progress can have a better way to, better resource to find the progress on this?
Yeah, the city's looking at, with changing technologies, we are looking at better ways for all projects, not just this one, right, in order for it to be updated. But our GIS system isn't quite there yet, but we are looking at programs similar to, Anaheim has something that's called Andy's Maps, where you can go on there and it'll pop up and say, hey, there's a project in this area, and you can click on it.
There's a great technology thrust through community development several years ago, but the project person for that left for Dana Point. And so, we lost a lot of it, awful lot of inertia there.
Yeah, but on this particular project, when the mitigated neg deck is done, we will be posting it to the website, and that will give information.
I would suggest you contact the owner with these concerns that the public has come to us on, about posting their property, no trespassing, cleaning up their property, some form of safety security they're requiring. Somebody skateboarded in a pool and breaks their neck, there's certain liability issues to the owner if they're not posting it. You need to probably have a serious conversation with your counterpart from Lifetime Fitness, I would suggest.
And for the review of mitigated negative declaration, and also for the review of like partial EIR, EAR, do we have a required timeframe to complete the review?
If you're talking about when a project's deemed complete for the Permit Streamlining Act, yes, there is a mandate to follow the Permit Streamlining Act, we're well within that. And then, as far as the public review comment period from when we release that draft document, that's a 20-day public review comment period.
You might not get 20 days to read it, however. They'll probably give it to you on your doorstep the week before, so you better be reading.
Now, I'm asking, once they submit that, we, sometime we call, a minister's draft of mitigated negative declaration, you already have the document, how long do you have to review it?
We've asked for two weeks to review it, that's a very expedited review period.
Okay, I think that's enough. It's time to close this public hearing.
Right, thank you.
Normally, three minutes has been far, way exceeded. Is there any other reports from Commissioner's staff? Do we have any discussion on the tentative future agenda? Okay, Mr. Wu.
Just report Commissioner's staff, I'm going to have to ask our DRSC backup if September 25th he can attend the DRSC meeting, because I will be out of town on business that day.
What's the date?
September 25th, Wednesday.
Give me a moment, let me check.
September 25th?
The 27th.
More like the 27th, maybe, is that the?
Is it the 27th?
It'd be a Wednesday, right?
It's a Wednesday, yeah.
It's the 27th.
I was incorrect, 27th, I will be gone that week.
I can attend.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Is there any other reports, reports of commissioners or staff?
I just wanted to make one point of clarification, and I realized this when Commissioner Smith made a comment, and I wanted to wholeheartedly apologize because something came across incorrectly. And that had to do with newspapers. When our housing element was published in a press release in the newspaper, so I wanted to make that clear. My goal wasn't to say that people don't read newspapers, I clearly read the SC Times, the Sun Post, OC Register, where my mind immediately went to was the public notice, that that's what I was referring to, but not to say that people don't read newspapers. It'd be hard pressed to find someone who doesn't read any of those around here.
It'd be great to put it out there on Twitter and Facebook.
Yeah, we were just trying to cover all venues within our short timeframe, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Electronic thrust going again.
And a press release.
Okay, if there's no other reports or needs, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
We'll move to adjourn to the regular planning commission meeting, to be held at 6:00 PM on September 20th, 2017, in Council Chambers at City Hall, located at 100 Avenue Procedio, San Clemente, California.
I have a motion to adjourn, a second. Second by Commissioner Blackwell, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 7-0.